...the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, open, and just for all.
Thank you very much. And now we'll call you back up here for the important thing. The robotics presentation.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Gay and this is Joanne Mahoney. And we are advisors for the Whitcomb School Robotics Program. Mayor Vigen, Superintendent Grulick, and members of the committee, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'd like to say a few words if I may. First one is robotics is here to stay. What do I mean by that? Well, we have autonomous vehicles now. We have robots serving coffee. We have drones delivering packages, okay? This was not happening seven years ago. Seven years ago, a member of the committee, Jennifer Hardy and William Rigney had approached myself and Bill White. And they had a vision of having a robotics program at the middle school. I knew zero about robotics. So I did some research and I found a few programs and one was called VEX. And it was pretty funny because I went through this professional development with the Worcester Public Schools and built a robot. And I had presented it to the superintendent at the time. And it didn't work. And he says, "Well, does it move?" I said, "Not yet." And then I think it was two days later, I brought it in front of the committee and we approved the program. So I did get it working. So that was seven years ago. So why VEX? Well, when I researched different platforms, there was many aspects for the VEX platform that went along with my teaching. And some of those were total student participation and engagement. And what I mean by this is, in this VEX program, the coaches cannot be talking to the judges at all. When the judges interview the students, that's it. The coaches can't be on the floor when they're competing. Other programs, corporations are involved. And it's in the corporation's best interest to get the engineers involved. And what happens? You have engineers building robots and students looking. So I didn't want that type of program at all. Some of the other things were individual and group work, collaboration between teams, and I'll let the students talk about that. And combining mechanical engineering, computer programming, and coding. All pretty neat. With this program, the other selling point was QCC, which is Quinn-Sigman Community College, kind of took us under their wing. And we were sort of part of Worcester Public Schools in that respect. And the nice thing about that was all our events were paid for by a grant from EMC and Northrop Grumman. And that is still true today, as long as we compete at QCC. However, the program is expanding and we are going to be... The regionals are going to Framingham in another two weeks. So that's like a $750 bill that will have to foot. So it was great while it lasted, but things are changing. But it is a great program. We have 20-plus students that are totally committed. We meet Tuesdays and Thursdays after school, all year long. And we have six-to-eight competitions with a full day Saturdays. We're there eight, eight-fifteen, and sometimes don't get out there until 5:30, 6 o'clock. So it's a tough, tough commitment for the kids. So they are really committed. When you have 20 students like that, that's really a great thing, okay? The other thing that we are working on now is vertical alignment with the high school. We have Patrick McCall, who teaches at the high school, and he's doing the robotics program there. We have a shared room now at Whitcomb that the high school has bought the 12-foot arena. And we have bought the pad and all the game pieces, which change every year, by the way. There's always a new game, which is really neat. So that's really a good thing. One last important note is that the students use the engineering design process and they experience many, many failures. I can't stress this enough. And we let them build the robots. We let them do the coding, okay? Mrs. Mahoney and myself do not. They have to work it out. They have to solve the problems. So basically, the student's success is totally their own achievements. And without further ado, I want to really congratulate this team for receiving the excellence award. This is really, really an honor for Marlboro. So come on up.
Hello, my name is Xena Charia.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Kotay.
And I'm Ryan Fedeg.
And our team is the Autonomous Panthers. We are also known by the number 4344B. We are currently all in eighth grade and have been working together since we were in sixth grade. At a recent VEX robotics competition, we received the excellence award. The excellence award is the highest award presented at a competition. To be considered for this award, the judges take into account field performance, team dynamic, and the engineering notebook. And I actually have my engineering notebook, if you guys would all like to see it. I took upon the role of the writer for the team's notebook. Using the notebook, the reader can understand the step-by-step building of our robot. It also explains the strategies we used. It explains each and every obstacle we faced. The notebook is our robot's manual. It explains the different functions. It explains every single idea, design, and test we create, and the step-by-step building process, and the different competitions we attend, along with a summary of what happens at those competitions. And of course, a day-to-day report of what we accomplish each time we get together. The notebook will explain how we built our robot from day one, when we picked up that screwdriver, after we had a goal of what we wanted to accomplish, through every design we went through, and what we worked on, and what didn't work, and why we chose the designs we did to create a successful robot today. Thank you.
So the main component of the game is just how it works. So it's a 12-by-12-foot arena, and it's divided in half by a fence. And on each half, you have so many stars and so many cubes. And your goal is to try to get all of them over on the other side. And there's a near zone and a far zone. And depending on what object it is and what zone it's in, that's how many points you get. And your overall goal is just to get all your stuff onto the other side. And you're with one alliance, and you're against two other people on the other team. And yeah, that's basically how the competition works. And for the judging, so there are a few judges that go around asking kids about, "How did you build your robot?", and just almost a lot of the stuff that we put in the notebook, but they ask you in person the questions. And like, for example, they'll say like, "What was your main design for the robot?", or "How do you guys work together and think of ideas?", stuff like that, just simple things about how you built your robot and where you are now. And a main thing about the end of the game is the alliances. So once you finish all your games, you go into a time where, if you're in like the top eight seeds, you get to choose two other teams to join you. And you go against each other in like a tournament. And whoever wins it all gets a trophy. And in our last competition, we were the bottom seed, but we ended up choosing the right alliances, so it's very important. And we ended up getting to the finals. And with all these components, that's how we basically won the excellence award in Framingham.
I just want to point out that we have one other member, but he's homesick right now, so... And then this is the excellence award here. Yeah, this is the robot. And then this is how we push the stars under the fence. Thank you, everybody.
So when you get this stuff, is it a kit? Or do you just have all... You have to start from scratch?
Originally, when we first started, we started from like a kit. It's called our Protobot. And when we do that, it just makes like a simple base. But then after that, we kept on redesigning and redesigning, and thinking of new ideas, and constructing new things onto the robot, and that's how it's like that. And by kit, I think what we mean is like different metal pieces, and then we construct it all together. That's what we mean by kit.
Yeah, so you buy a whole bunch of pieces?
Yes.
And then you figure out how to put them together? Okay. So amazing. And I love the color of your binder.
Yes, yes.
Super awesome.
Did you guys pick this?
Yeah, that's what I just said. There's strength in this color. This is fabulous.
Other questions for the committee. Ms. Tennessee?
So I have a question about that fence you were talking about, like the game area. So is it literally a fence where you have to drop it like over onto the other side? Or is it just move it over like a line on the ground?
So in the fence, there's almost like three sections of it. And in two of them, you're able to push them underneath the fence, the stars.
Okay.
Or you can just throw everything over, including the cubes, which are much bigger than those stars. So it's kind of hard to get the cubes under, so that's why it's good to be able to throw them over.
So does this have the capability then of actually then lifting? Or is it more by your force of how hard you...
It's mainly the force of pushing it under. That's what we found out gets you the most points in the game.
Okay. And then you talked about that alliance, which... So had you guys been taking notes along the way about who were people that you thought were making like smart moves? Or how did you guys figure out who to make that alliance with?
So what we do when we're in between matches, we go to most of the teams and we look for... We ask them about their robot and questions. And like, "How many points can you score?", and like, "Can you throw certain things over?", "Can you push them under?", or "Can you..." Do a bunch of stuff. So that's how we find out like who's our best choice in the game.
Gotcha. That's really cool. It's kind of like Survivor robot style. Exactly. Really cool, nice. It was really neat.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Oh wait, you have one more?
There's one more thing we want to tell you about. So the coding and the programming on the robot, it's a lot of hard work. And you need to like memorize the code that you need to put in for like, make like the right drive be a certain button, or like the lifting be a certain button. And there's also autonomous. We have to time everything. And at the beginning of the game, there's 15 seconds where the robot goes by itself, and you don't drive it, so you have to program it like perfectly so it can score cubes and stars over the fence or underneath.
Wow.
So when you're coding it, is it a certain language? Or you kind of make up a language for your particular robot?
It's a certain language, like how much power you want, like...
So is it like C++? I mean, like what's the language?
So there's this area, it's called Robot C, and it's like typing in code and...
Not that I know what that is. I know C++ is a thing, so... And it's great to see Mrs. Mahoney.
Nice to see you.
Retired Marlboro Public Schools teacher, still at it. Thank you.
I won't let her retire.
Ball and chain.
Thank you to all of you, though. It's really cool.
This is so amazing.
Thank you.
We'll give it to... Can you just wait a couple minutes so they can look? Okay, thank you. Oh, can I just say one thing? I'm sorry, just for the parents, the video of this show tomorrow morning will be on the website. So if you want to, you know, tell your friends, you can put it on Facebook or whatever. You can just take it right off the website.
Be memorable, memory project.
While we're waiting, how about Julie Baker? Would you want to intro this a little bit? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Julie Baker. I'm the art coordinator for the district. And I have with me Celeste Toiseau. She's a senior at Marlboro High. Thank you for having us here tonight, and we'd like to tell you about the memory project. Celeste is actually holding some of the samples, so she'll filter through those so that you can see them. The memory project is a global service project that connects high school artists with children from around the world who have faced substantial challenges such as extreme poverty, violence, or loss of parents. Members of the National Art Honor Society, like Celeste, who choose to participate, receive photos of children and teens on the waiting list. And they create portraits based from those photos in the artistic medium of their choice. To date, Marlboro High School students have contributed over 100 portraits to children all over the world, including Mexico, Ethiopia, Haiti, Nepal, and Madagascar. This year, our students created portraits for Colombia and Syria. I'm going to ask Celeste actually to share just a little bit about her own experience involved in the memory project, so I'll hold those.
Hi, my name is Celeste, and I'm in NHS. And before NHS, I didn't even know about the memory project. So going into NHS and finding what the memory project, it was a really cool thing. My favorite part about it is not only like do you get to express yourself artistically, because you get to choose whatever medium you want to do it in, but also like the connection that you kind of build with this orphan. You know, because you spent like so many hours, so much hours, like looking at their face. It's like you build a connection with them. And it like makes you reflect on how good you have it, and it helps you create something special for them.
So the memory project, a few years back, started a really nice tradition where they started creating videos of the deliveries of these portraits. So we do have part of a video we'd like to share with you from the delivery of our portraits to Colombia this year. Yeah, it's an eight-minute video. We won't show the whole thing.
Is this the one that was on the website?
I believe it is, yeah.
I bawled my eyes out watching.
It certainly gives you an inside look on the impact these portraits make, yeah.
You need to see the rest. It's just glorious.
Just a teaser.
On the website, yeah.
See the rest on the website.
The link is on the website. You can watch the whole thing. We should be receiving a video also from the Syrian delivery, probably any week now. So we'll post that as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the memory project.
Questions from the committee. Ms. Matthews?
Celeste, congratulations. This is wonderful. They're beautiful portraits.
Is that the one you did?
Is that... No, yours is in there. Now, was this your first year doing the memory project?
No, I've done three in total. My first one was last year.
They're wonderful. Julie, does every district get the video from them after?
So that delivery was not just of our portraits. So what happens is the memory project will email me, because we're on their list, and they'll say, "We have photos from, you know, a list of countries." And we pretty much just tell them who we want photos from. And then they get compiled with whoever else is making photos for that country, and they have a whole delivery plan, yeah.
Because obviously they customize the fun of it, but I didn't know.
Yeah, so they customize the video for us with the pictures of our portraits and the names and stuff, yeah.
The look on their faces, though, those kids, is just amazing when they see themselves.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do the students receive the biographical information of the students that they're drawing? The hardships that they've gone through?
We receive very little information about the individual children. We get first names and a photo. But the memory project is a wonderful nonprofit organization, and they provide us sort of an info sheet of general situations that these particular children have gone through. So Syria especially, I mean, they described that most of these children are living in tents and have been for years on the border of Syria. So they have very little personal belongings, so these portraits are something that they really hold close to their heart. Oh, we do get their favorite color. Thank you, Celeste. They send us the first name and their favorite color. So often, the student artists will incorporate that color.
Yeah. It really is. And my daughter did it for a couple of years as well, and I just remember it just being really, really powerful. And knowing like some of these, they don't ever have a photograph of themselves, really. So to have somebody... Oh, and when you watch the video later on, when the kids say, you know, the stuff, I'm going to cry. Just watch the video. It's amazing. It's great. Thank you so much for bringing it to Marlboro and doing it.
Sorry, I just wanted to say thank you, and I apologize. How many years have you guys been doing this? Is it three or four?
We started in 2007. This year was our largest participation, where we submitted 30 portraits this year. So that got us over like the 100 mark, roughly. I don't have an exact count.
No, it's amazing, and kudos for, you know, getting into it and keeping it going. It's really touching. It's really an amazing project.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Website and logo.
So we have Julie come back up?
Hello again. All right, so for this next segment, I represent my graphic design class at Marlboro High School. In January, I was brought into some discussions about the rebranding of our district. And it seemed like a perfect, real-world experience for our graphic design students to become part of. I want to thank Superintendent Grulick for allowing my students to become involved in this process and for keeping an open mind for the creative possibilities that we weren't sure... We really had no idea what was going to come out of this. So everyone involved was just so supportive of the students being part of this process and kind of seeing how it played out. Ultimately, my students were asked to present ideas for a more modern sleek logo design for the school district. The students definitely came up with a wide variety of ideas, and we are so pleased with all of them for their professionalism and commitment to the design process. From researching, brainstorming, sketching, to revising and refining their design in Adobe Illustrator, and then even more revising after hearing feedback from the clients and working together, almost like a design team, they were really helping each other through that refinement process. So as a result of this back-and-forth process, we are very proud to present the winning design that was chosen as the new logo for our school district. So this... This sleek and modern new logo designed by 10th-grade art student Fernando Arroyo typifies the essence of the Marlboro Public Schools. The color palette suggests a rich and vibrant diversity that is transformed at each stage of the educational process. Movement ever towards a goal is suggested by the sweeping succession of a pattern, representing perhaps the pages of a book, sails carried by the wind, or the blossoming of a young mind. We also have a color version. You want me to show that as well? So here you're seeing the logo with some varieties in color. And the idea behind this is that each of those pages, if you will, would represent a different grade span in the school district. So this, if I go back here, the far left in purple would potentially be ECC. And then as you go through the ages, it would be elementary, Whitcomb, and high school. I'm going to put the main logo back up, and I will introduce our designer. So I'd like to ask Fernando Arroyo to join me up here so we can formally recognize him for his incredible work and talent. And I am pleased to present him with a gift from the district to thank him for this logo that will serve as the image and symbol of our district for years to come.
Any questions for Fernando, Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. Congratulations. It's fabulous. I'm curious, how long do you think it kind of took you to, you know, kind of work through your initial thoughts and kind of get to your finished design, you know, before even working through all of the different layers of talking with other people?
I don't... It didn't take too long to think of the idea. The idea kind of just came to me very quickly. And then through the process of redesigning and collaborating with my peers, it just started slowly becoming into the final product.
And did you find, like, was there a certain portion that you found to be a little bit more challenging? Like after you had, you know, more people coming to you and making suggestions? Or was it, you know, good to work with other folks?
Yeah, it was very nice to work with other people. The more complicated part were the pages, because in the beginning, they weren't as curved as they are now. They were more flat. But like through collaboration, it turned out better this way.
It's exciting, and it's exciting that you've been able to be a part of making this happen here at Marlboro. So thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, and congratulations. Superintendent's report.
So I think this was doubled up with website and logo, so...
I'm sorry.
Because the logo is a sort of a teaser and a prelude to a website that we've migrated to. And tonight, we have Beth Wagner, whom you know from working with us for many years, who served as a consultant behind the scenes on this project. And she and Reina are going to take us through the reasons for the new website, a peek at some of the new features, as well as the timeline for rollout in the district. Beth?
Thank you. It's good to see you all again. I'm going to take you back several meetings when I was still in official capacity here. And we discussed kind of in a general term the fact that we were looking to move toward a new website. And not only have it be a website, but it be the foundation for a comprehensive digital communication system in the district. It has been, it was a dream of mine from the time I started here to pull something like this together. So I'm really excited that Ms. Grulick brought me back as a consultant to help spearhead this project. that Ms. Grulick brought me back as a consultant to help spearhead this project, because it's, almost feels like it's a baby I give birth to, almost, because it's actually happening, I'm so excited. The search for a new website provider started about a year ago. We had heard rumors to the effect that our current provider was no longer going to support the platform, they weren't gonna further develop it. We also noted that our, the current platform we have was not ADA compliant. And this was a huge concern of mine personally, not only because it didn't serve the district as well as it should have, because it wasn't as accessible by all of our users as it could have been, but also, we were hearing rumors through my professional organizations that a lot of the school districts, some in Massachusetts, were getting civil rights complaints filed against them because their websites were not ADA compliant and were not responsive in design. So we did the search, it was a long search, I interviewed uncounted numbers of providers. And my recommendation, which ended up being accepted by the administration, was that we went with a organization called School Wires. School Wires is owned by the Blackboard community, as is School Fusion. So having them both owned by the same parent company made the transition a little easier. We didn't have to do, you know, negotiations went better, so on and so forth. The reason that we're going to the new website isn't, is not because it's pretty and flashy and all that stuff, and we've made it absolutely as nice-looking as we could, but it serves our stakeholders better. It is responsive in design, and this is huge, because when you're looking at it on a device that is not a computer, it will reconfigure itself to accommodate the device instead of just seeing, excuse me, a shrunken version of what we have now. We are going to be able to do a single sign-on for our staff, so that when they log on to their computer, the same credentials will get them onto the website. It is set up to have a special staff section on it that will take the place of the current Intranet. So it's a one-stop shop for anybody within the district to find information. One of the reasons I particularly like this one is because it has an outstanding translation function. There are close to 84 languages, had my last count, that you can translate this website into. As long as the information is on the site in HTML, it can be translated. We asked our provider to put Spanish and Portuguese at the top of the translation list, because those are the most common requests for translations. But all you have to do is scroll down, and you find all of the other options. The site also has what is called fabulous above-the-fold functions. Above-the-fold is an old journalism term coming from an old journalist, where you want your best news and your most useful news to be on the front page, above the fold, because that's where you see it in the stands, that where you see it laying on a pile, and that's where you see it when it's on your front doorstep. So the site has a lot of great above-the-fold features, including multiple ways to get to important links like lunch menus and bus schedules and so on and so forth. The site is fully ADA compliant. The only thing that we will have to monitor are how we generate the PDFs to be posted on there. Other than that, everything that is programmed within the site is 100% ADA compliant. It's, and last but not least, and I'll let Reina talk more about this, it ties into what you're seeing here is the district's rebranding effort. And as, she's going to give you a little sneak preview of the site, and I think you'll see some things you might recognize there when she takes you through a couple pages.
It's nice to be here, thank you, Beth, and thank you, committee, for allowing us to show you the new website. I've been working closely with Beth since I got here, and it has been like giving birth, that's for sure. This is gonna be a brief preview, because we could spend a lot more time. And I'm gonna take us to the district website initially, and just point out a few features. I'm not gonna repeat what Beth said, but some things will become obvious as I go through it. Beth did mention, well, first of all, you see our logo, which I think looks outstanding. The function of select a school is very easy, we just drop down, and there we have it. The translation piece was, I think, enormous, because in other websites that I've gone to, when you hit a translation button, it doesn't look the same, and you almost feel like, what did I get, chopped liver? So, just to show you, in looking at the website, I'm just gonna scroll kind of quickly, so that you get the sense of what I'm talking about. So if I were to go to the top, and I'm gonna hit the translation, as you see, English to Spanish, and it converts it fairly quickly, you can't tell the difference. It's exactly, it looks the same. And another feature that we really liked, that, of course, we wanted it to look beautiful, we wanted it to look clean, but we needed to be engaging. And that comes with clear font, that comes with engaging visuals, and something that we like to call the flying icons. These are our global icons, which each of the sites has that match the color of the given school, and you'll see that in a moment. And these would be, these are consistent, I mean, here's the Athletics, for example. I'm gonna take you to one of my favorite sections, because as someone who gets a lot of requests from different district people, is our calendar. The calendar is so important, upcoming events, of course. The calendar, which is easy to access, and it's easy to see, is also color-coded by events. And the webmasters for each of the given schools will be updating the calendar on a regular basis, because we know things change. Weather, for example. And it's a very easy calendar to keep track of. Upcoming events on the side here allow for people who might be too busy to look at the calendar, just get a little sneak preview. We also have announcements, and this is also consistent in all the homepages of each of the school websites. And as we learned tonight, the Memory Project would be a news item. People don't have a lot of time, but we want to give them a snapshot, so if they want to learn more, all they have to do is hit the Learn More button, and then they're gonna go off to where they can get more information. So we, you know, everything that we did was very carefully thought out. Popular links, one of the, probably the most popular ones that I've come to appreciate here at the district is the Virtual Backpack, because so many PTO members are submitting flyers for fundraising efforts, so we put it at the top, where you can see all of the different flyers that have been sent into the district. In Clement Weather, another very popular, popular link. And I think I'll take us to the departments. So of course, everyone's gonna have their favorite departments, I'm gonna go to Athletics. And by the way, the different departments are linked to different pages, so you don't have, if you, you could go to Whitcomb, and you could find Athletics, and it can go back and forth. So I'm not gonna go through all those, but just to show you.
The community, right, Reina?
Absolutely, yeah.
For folks who are looking for Athletics, it's right above the City of Marlboro link.
So there's another place you would find it. I mean, people who are alumni may not know to go to a school, their school website, they might just go straight to there. City of Marlboro is another link. And of course, we want to show the school committee, where we post everything. Let's see, policies. I know this was something that Beth spent hours on, because there are a lot of policies, but they're all there. And I think it's useful to see one of the school websites, just to kind of show you how it translates, so. We'll go to the ECC. And something that we were very aware of is that people come to your website, yes, it's education, but it's also entertainment, there's an edutainment value. So we want to keep it fresh, putting in as many pictures as we can. If you scroll over, you see in ADA compliant what is being shown. And as you can see, some of the links that come out here are gonna be different, because Athletics wouldn't be a link that the ECC folks would have. Home plus School would be a link that would make more sense for them. But no matter where you go, you still have a feeling of familiarity, because the structure is the same, the template, the format. And it's all about branding, making people feel like they've come home, in a way. Tweet pages, of course. So those are some of the main features, I'm very excited about it. The webmasters for each of the school are embracing their schools with a lot of integrity and pride, and that's what we were hoping for. I'll be overseeing the district and checking in with the webmasters, making sure things are always current. And Beth, I think you were gonna come back and say something about the launch integration? Yep, okay. Oh, I just wanted to, so as you can see here with the logo, this page, which is in the purple shade, corresponds with the ECC, and it would go forward from there with the different schools.
So, when I said that you were getting a sneak preview, you really are. This is not live, you have to know the URL to get to it, and Reina is passing out a little card that shows you how to do that.
Sorry, we couldn't afford chocolate with the.
So, because the staff section of all of the webpages is protected for staff only, you have to be able to sign on to see them, so we created a sign-on for you, to use, so that you can go and see what is posted on all of those pages. This is a work in progress. We are scheduled to flip the switch and get the kinks worked out over your winter break next week. And when everybody comes back to school on the 27th, this site will be live and ready to go. There are some areas that we're still developing. One of them is we are working with Sharon Buckley on expanding the guidance and counseling areas, particularly for the middle school. We're putting together an awful lot of resources, we're starting to think about how we want to structure that. So that's in the works. We're also currently working on an EL and a SPED presence on the website. We have some work going on in content for those areas. And we also, I am also working with Jeff Rosinski very closely to expand the resources on the Athletic website. We're trying to encourage them, all the teams, to get their own pages and those kinds of things. So, like I said, it's a work in progress, as websites are meant to be. They're never supposed to be static and stagnant. And then on the 27th, I hand all of this to Reina, and I start on the next part of this implementation. This is the foundation of the digital communications platform that we were discussing. On March 1st, I will start working with School Wires Blackboard on implementing what is called the Mass Notification System. I think people know it as Blackboard Connect. And it eventually will take the place of School Messenger. I know there will be no tears shed over that. We are going to do what has been a passion of mine for a long time, is there's going to be a district app that will be created, that will be downloadable from both Apple and Android. And what this will allow people to do is you download the app, and then you can tailor the information that is being found on the website to what you want to see. So if you have a child that's only in the middle school, you don't need to know when kindergarten registration is. So you can go into the app and say, "Just show me announcements and calendar items and so on from Whitcomb." Or you could do Whitcomb and the high school. The calendar feeds on every single one of the pages are available as an iCal download and as a Google Calendar download. So we've made it as easy as possible for you to populate your devices. And then we will do, as I mentioned, the social media integration. Marlboro has a presence on Facebook and Twitter, but some of the buildings are also moving toward those, so the individual buildings will be able to integrate those postings as well. And then we will have the, I'm missing something. Oh, the single sign-on, so that the staff can sign on with just their regular Windows sign-on, like they usually do. This, the next step, all of those platforms are gonna be done simultaneously. It's gonna take four to six weeks. So technically, by spring, we should be test-flying a lot of them. We'll have them all up and going by the end of the school year, and we will hit the ground running with the comprehensive package in place and ready to go for the next school year.
Questions from the committee, Ms. Tennessee?
Great, this is fantastic, because I know this has been something you've been working on for a long time. Question, though, you have mentioned that at each building, there was like a webmaster. So then, the home of the overall webmaster, I'm guessing, then is you, Reina. So the question is more on the calendar aspect. And this has been something that we've had ongoing conversations, is about the management of all of these important dates, which I'm sure you're aware of, but, you know, concerns that we've always had, and we've had, you know, tried to figure out, is how do we make sure that we're not scheduling something in an elementary school on the same night that, you know, the high school has a performance going on? How do we make sure that we're not causing more problems for our families? So, not to say that I'm expecting an answer tonight, but I just, I kind of put that out there as we need to find a way of making sure that we are funneling that information as best as possible into one place, so that we can troubleshoot that earlier, rather than finding two weeks out that the, you know, art show for the school districts is on the same night as parent conferences in, you know, one of the elementary schools. Bless you, so.
Well-taken, and I know that's been a concern. The district master calendar, of course, has to be the foundation, and that's put together early on, and it's worshiped. And it has to have as many things plugged in. I think that with the webmasters, and I'll be overseeing it, there's not gonna be, you know, one-person thing, but everybody will be responsible, you know, in cross-fertilizing and talking. So I think we're gonna get a lot, a lot better, but it is an important thing that we're gonna pay attention to.
Thank you, because it's just, it's something that I think all of us at different points in times, Morgan, I know you've said before.
We, if I could respond to that, Patty's been working with sending emails out to principals to get things aligned now, because things tend to fall in the same, you know, you're just moving it a day forward or back. And I have told the principals that there's gonna be a date certain, by which if it's not on the calendar, it doesn't exist.
Right.
Because we spend countless hours at Central Office figuring these things out, and it makes for a hard, you know, a hard choice for families, and that's not what we're doing.
Right. And it's just like, we all know, we get to the end of the school year, we have a certain amount of concerts that are happening at the same time as we have like an art show going on here, and we want the families to be able to enjoy and not feel like they can't get to something. So my hope is, this, you know, will help us provide a platform that we can hopefully figure that out, and be a help, not a hindrance to that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the committee? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth and Reina.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. EF Tours, on Saturday, January 21st, I attended a convening of mass superintendents and ESE staff at EF Tour Headquarters in Cambridge. The topic was a new vision for teaching and learning in Massachusetts. The highlight for me was Skyping to Paris with Andrea Schlechter, who's the Director of Education for the Office of Economic Cooperation and Development. He gave us the results of Massachusetts on the global stage of some 72 other countries. We actually heard about it again today at our SE convening at the Best Western. Considered as a country, Massachusetts is bar none, with the exception of Singapore and some other countries. Massachusetts is always number one, of course, in the United States. But that was awesome to hear. And then what are the lessons that we can learn from other top-scoring countries? Commissioner Chester reacted to these results, and it was really awesome that he commended Marlboro for its robust STEM program. The group plans a trip in October to visit schools in Poland, which is a top-scoring country. They have already visited Finland, China, Cuba, and Canada. So today, February 14th, a team from Marlboro Public Schools, comprised of Mary Murphy, Lynn Medallu, Dan Riley, and I, attended a convening at the Best Western. The theme this year was ensuring every student succeeds, setting ambitious expectations. The breakout sessions that we went to were interesting and informative. I went to one on cultural proficiency and how to reduce discipline issues, as well as one on building instructional leadership teams. Also, a shout-out to our contemporary a cappella that performed for a half an hour as folks were coming to their seats, and we had a lot of comments written on the boards, they have a reaction boards, and people were very pleased with the Marlboro High School contemporary a cappella, so shout-out to them. Summit on Poverty included in the handouts and information section is a flyer with information about the Joint MASC/MASSS Summit on Poverty, which will be held on Friday. about the joint MASC/MASSS Summit on Poverty, which will be held on Friday, March 10th, at Clark University in Worcester. This is a very important topic for the Commonwealth and especially as well for our district. It's going to focus on the impact of poverty on students, but not just that, looking at strategies to address the needs, especially the social-emotional needs of students who have a little deeper need. If you're interested in attending, it is an MASC/MASSS joint conference. Patty Sibilio will be happy to register us. The cost is $30 per person. I plan on attending, and I will bring it up at the leadership team on Monday morning to see who else would like to join me, but I would love it if some of you would avail yourself of that opportunity as well. In your packet as well, you have "For Information: No Action Required," my mid-cycle goal on, my mid-cycle progress on the goals. It looks like a lengthy document. It really has been presented to you before. If you'll notice, the goal is listed, the action steps and the benchmarks, and then comes the mid-cycle. So, you've seen this document I've added to it, and you'll finally see in the summative where I land. I have met with all whom I evaluate, all but one, when that meeting is scheduled for Friday, for anywhere from one to two hours, looking deeply at the formatives that they presented to me, as well as having conversation a little bit deeper about their goals and questions that I have from now until June. There is one piece in my, one piece of evidence that I have supplied. When I took this position, we subscribed to a survey with a book that we read called "The Five Dysfunctions of a Team." You will recall maybe hearing about that. We scored pretty much at baseline zero on those five. It's been a very strategic and targeted goal of mine to make our meetings, and those are the leadership team meetings, but to make that sort of a model for the district, to make them more meaningful, more inclusive, and more strategically aligned to our goals. So, to that end, I devised a short survey on Survey Monkey, and you can see some of the progress. I feel very gratified and take no credit for this. The credit really goes to the team for their distributed leadership stepping up to, it's awesome for me, who wants to lead this book study, who wants to lead this discussion, but I feel that the trust, the absence of conflict, the commitment and the accountability and the determination to get results is really starting to formulate. So, I did want to draw your attention to that, and that concludes my report.
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Executive Director of Primary and Elementary Education.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, very short report. First thing is that on Thursday, our second MPS, National Institute of School Leadership Cohort, will complete. So, at that time, Charlie Caleri, Jody Reyes, Bethany Pritchard, RJ Scazza, Kaliopi Pantazopoulos will have completed a program they started in October 2015. I need to add, I did not include it in my report, but Rupal Patel is also a member of that cohort as well. And on Thursday, yes, so congratulations to Rupal as well. On Thursday, Mark, Maureen, and I will be joining that cohort because we're going to be working on plans on how to continue the work and the projects they've been doing over the last almost two years will continue into and impact their schools and their leadership. So, that's very exciting. Kindergarten registration, we have begun that process, and as of today, I just checked, one of the new pieces that we've done is that kindergarten registration is going to be by appointment. As of this morning, we have 134 families that have registered to further registration appointments online. So, approximately, I was figuring it out, I think that's probably 40 to 45 percent of what we would expect for kindergarten registration. In order to have enough slots and make sure that we would be able to have 400 people walk in, we did extend it an extra day for that registration day, and we also have nighttime, afternoon makeup period as well. So, we're looking at that. Kindergarten screening in June, I think we're approaching snow makeup days, so we may have to already look at that as well, but we're very excited about this new process. MCAS 2.0, just to give you an update, that window of testing will begin on April 4th, and so, we're starting to, this week, we have a district-wide organizational meeting. We've had a couple of WebExes that were snowed out recently, but they were rescheduled, so a number of people took place with them today. And so, on Thursday, one of our first agenda items are that we will be doing two district-wide practice tests in March to make sure that we are ready to go and that our systems and all of our structures can once again, because it's slightly different, it is the Pearson, but it is MCAS 2.0, just make sure that all the systems will continue to work as seamlessly as they did last year. So, we'll have two separate days, one day where all the third graders and some of, would come, will test and do a practice test, and then another day for all the fourth graders and another group that would come to see what the maximum capacity of our systems are. So, that's it. Any questions?
Questions from the committee? I actually, have we figured out how to transfer over the information about the students from ECC to kindergarten yet, or do we still treat them like they didn't exist last year?
So, one of the, there was a couple of different things. One of the things was that it was another entry point, so it was the, it's not automatic. It is once again a documentation of residency. So, that is the last place that we ask. It's the main place. So, I think that was the one issue that we had, and there was also some medicals that had to be updated for incoming kindergartens. So, it was the amount of documentation that we need for incoming kindergartens that is unique, and they want to maintain that system. I know.
Silly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Before I start, I just want to say, I thought the middle school students, their presentation, that was excellent.
Amazing.
I'll tell you why. It's the soft skills that we want out of students. I had a chance to talk to them before they presented, and each one could have presented alone. Do you, I remember Ryan's name, and so, I was watching him, stood erect, global scanning, then used very few vagueness terms. That's the kind of thing that we need to see from our students, and we're seeing presentations in class, and so, having those students have a chance to present in front of you, it's terrific. So, thank you for that. I want to talk about three things. First, I want to talk about the History Quest Fellows. So, I wrote to you about Humanity Supervisor Jody Reyes. Let us know that three teachers, Carolyn Caddell, teacher at the Whitcomb School, Julie Jenks, and Melissa Pivanka, teachers at the Marlboro High School, were selected as 2017, this is a mouthful, Woodrow Wilson History Quest Fellows by the Woodrow Wilson National Foundation in Princeton, New Jersey. And what this will do will help them develop the principles of game-based learning to promote inquiry and engagement in United States history classes. Comes with a lot of benefits. I've been, I happen to be in their classes several times, they're terrific teachers, so congratulations to them. The MCAS 2.0 preparation for students to get ready for the MCAS test, had a chance to speak with our supervisors, sat in some of the PLC meetings, so we know that teachers are preparing, getting our students ready for the next round of MCAS tests. Listed below were some of the, listed below, in my report to you, you can see some of the activities that are going on. Lastly, Kyle Westcott, the mathematics teacher leader at the high school, let us know that 210 students took part in the American Mathematics Competition for grades 10 and for grades 12. Competition is a national competition and can lead to scholarships for schools. The good news is that 60 more students participated this year than last year, so congratulations to all the students and the teachers that work with them. Any questions?
Questions from the committee?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director of Finance in School Buses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have a quick report tonight, just to let you know that the food service balances, I announced last month, they were around $2,600. The balances are now below $2,000. I want to thank the food service managers for working hard to collect balances and to get that decreased this month. In even better news, online payments have increased since last January, so we did about $2,000 more than we did last year at the same time. So, the program is still growing and still being adopted by new folks, which is fantastic, and I attached a report for you to see as well that shows over time that this continues to grow. As you have in front of you, the superintendent's FY '18 budget is handed out tonight. Yes, I know, it is, it is much smaller, although I think it packs a punch, so. So, I just want to just briefly talk about the budget request.
I think it's a small class.
There's two pieces to it. The first is the, what I would say is the qualitative and quantitative piece, which talks about why and how, what are we requesting, why are we requesting it? The second piece is a line-item budget that I like to give the school committee that shows every single employee in the district, every line, every spending area, right down to the penny. The budget request this year is asking for an increase of 2.84 percent overall, and that will include 11.2 additional staff targeted to specifically address educational and operational issues at the school. It should be noted that nine of the 11.2 are specifically targeted for EL services. Superintendent and I look forward to feedback. I think we already have a good feedback loop in place where if there are questions, I believe earlier we talked about having the questions go to the vice chair, and the vice chair can certainly send them to Maureen and I. I know that there's going to be additional questions because you can't possibly cover everything, so it might be something that, you know, you're still interested in, you want to hear about. I'm happy to produce all of that and then give that on the night of the 9th as a frequently asked questions or additional document that we can add to the budget. On March 9th, we'll have our budget workshop, and at that time, we'll do a short presentation about the level service budget and then do a presentation about the requests from the superintendent's budget overall. So, I look forward to questions. I look forward to comments. I would really like to hear about your feeling about this budget process. I want to thank Maureen for allowing me to take a chance and switch it up a little bit. You know, we had kind of a large, kind of binder-style budget in the past, but what I'm really looking for is something condensed that, on our website, that a parent can go through and understand what we're trying to do. Whereas last year, there was just so many documents, it's hard to get through them all. We're trying to get it down to about a four- to five-page executive summary that anyone, any constituent can look at and understand what problems we need to solve immediately, why we're requesting money, and how we're going to use it. So, that's the basics of what we're trying to do here. So, again, I look really forward to the feedback on it, and on the 9th, we'll have a great budget session and go over all of that information. Additionally, on next, I'm sorry, on the 28th, there'll be an MSBA kickoff meeting with Lamro Pagano. They are now our designer. Also, Daedalus is our OPM, superintendent, myself, Nick Milano from the mayor's office, RJ Scazza, the principal of the Richard School, and we're all going to talk about the kickoff of the project for what's happening. This is like an operational meeting, so really, we're talking about some deliverables that the school may have to provide, the MSBA. There's an educational program guide. There's all kinds of things that we are going to have to start developing in the back end on our side to be able to get the project moving forward. So, as I get more information, I'll bring it to the committee. In addition, over February break, the designer's going to come and tour the Richard School. They're going to poke around the school. They want their architects and engineers to become familiar with it. They're not going to do anything, per se, other than look at the maps, look at how it's laid out, start to take notes. So, we're getting into the process, as I guess you could say.
Great. Questions from the committee, Ms. Tennessee?
Sorry, just one question on that. I'm sure you guys probably have gone through this, but are they also looking at the growth that's been happening on especially that side of the city and how that could potentially affect the numbers that would be hitting Richard?
What we did in the first part, if we go back to the statement of interest when we first approached the MSBA...
Right.
One thing that we actually in-depth gave the MSBA all of the building information that was happening in the city and projected growth. So, when we agreed to enrollment numbers with the MSBA as part of the process, they actually projected in-growth on that side of the city based on the projects we have now and the available projects in the future. So, that's why we actually have a larger, if you look at one of the options to create a school, instead of creating a school for the current enrollment in Richard, it's actually larger than that.
Yeah.
That's what they've approved, which is actually unlike MSBA. They are very conservative. So, the information that the city has provided us has been already included in that. One thing I'll note, though, is that if we do see even more growth, it's something that we have to go back with the designer and go back to the MSBA. It's a harder process because we have to prove it.
Right.
But they're not, they're not, this is a very reasonable group, and they will look at that information. It's just that we've already given them growth, and we've already shown them what we expect to be growth, so if we have something even above and beyond that, we're going to have to make our case again.
Right, and all of the pieces that are, you know, we're seeing playing out with the construction and so forth are aligning with the growth numbers that we had had projected, I'm guessing, at this point?
All of the projects that were in the pipeline, we gave to the MSBA to consider.
Okay.
So, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to speak out of line, but I believe that the city has asked for a short time period to look at new construction and funding. So, I think right now, we're in a stay.
Right.
So, we don't have any new information to give the MSBA at this time, but as you know, this is a longer-term project, and over the next 18 months, as we're working a lot of this, we might have some information we need to give them to update those projections.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to also add, one of the reasons it's a slimmer volume, not only the reasons that Mr. Bergeron spoke of, but the SIPs are not in there, the school improvement plans, which will come later, and we talked previously about why we think that aligns a little bit better. Also, there was a request from the committee at the January 24th meeting. There were some very targeted questions for Principal Daniels and Principal Caleri, and they are on the agenda for February 28th. To answer the questions, I've already spoken with them about what you may be looking for. So, we're sort of separating that out because there are no budget implications at this point, so we want to separate that out, as well as I am looking forward to the 9th of March, you'll be getting a book from me that night. It has no words, so I'm not going to read it to you, and the title of the book is embedded, if you look, in the budget book, so we'll see who comes up with the title. No words, no words.
I already know what it is, so.
Okay.
And the Muniz report is not in that, so.
Yeah, I have it as a separate document.
It's really sort of cheating. It's really this thing.
I just wanted to separate them out because I know like people like to take notes on the other piece, so.
Can you remind us what time on the 9th?
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
Seven, right here.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Minutes of January 24th, 2017.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
For the record, as I was not present at that meeting, I will abstain from this vote.
Duly noted. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all...
It's a girls-only meeting.
Oh, that's right. It was girls-only.
It was a girls-only meeting that night.
Mike was here.
Well, Mike was here.
He's one of the girls.
Wait a minute. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Public participation, any public participation? Public participation. Seeing none, policies to be approved by the school committee. Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you so much. So, you all had copies of policies that we have for first read the last time when it was the girls-only and Mike meeting. So, just to refresh everyone's memory, the visitors-to-school policy, 9.100, that was first up, where that was approved by our... that was first up, where that was approved by our policy subcommittee 3-0. There was a question that Ms. Matthews did raise relative to the change of the wording, where we were adding guardians. And she had asked, should it read legal guardians or legal guardian or just guardian? We did get a clarification from our attorney that probably would be best to have legal guardian or legal guardians. So, I would say that that is an amendment to what was initially presented to you at the last time. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended policy 9.100, visitors to the school.
Motion made and seconded to approve the visitors to the schools' policy 9.1 as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you. Next up would be the social media policy 7.980. And if you all recall, the changes that had occurred were on page three under section E, and it was actually the last sentence in that area. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the social media policy 7.980.
Motion made and seconded to approve social media policy 7.980. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you very much. Then, the next thing would, we were looking for a removal of current attendance policy 8.020. And the reason that we were looking to do that is that we were consolidating all of the attendance policy under one attendance policy, which is the next step for discussion, which would be attendance policy 8.100. So, that was the reasoning of that removal. So, I'd like to ask for, make a motion to ask for the removal of attendance policy 8.020.
Motion made and seconded to remove attendance policy 8.020. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you very much. And last in this group, I'd like to make a motion to approve attendance policy 8.100.
Motion made and seconded to approve attendance policy 8.100. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews?
So, I apologize because I did not get the questions to you ahead of time. But in the first, second paragraph, first point, attendance, the last sentence of the second paragraph, "For parents, guardians of students in grades nine through 12 who do not telephone to school will be contacted within three school days."
It's the law.
Chapter, yeah, but.
That's what the law states.
Well, it's not an M G L, it's just says chap, is it? Well, it's not cited as M G L, it just says chapter 222.
That's.
All right.
That's Mass General Law.
But I hope we're not waiting three days. I mean, we don't, so, okay.
I guess, isn't that what the attorney had?
Yeah, the attorney, this was direct from the attorney. It's a legal point of reference and it's contacted within. So, yes, to your point, the hope is that the administration are taking the steps to go ahead and move forward on contact.
Okay.
But that was meeting the expectations per the law.
Okay. Under types of absences, number two, in your strikeout revision, add, delete, you had A through F, F being other school-related and administration-approved meetings or functions. It looks like you put in, but it didn't carry over. There was no F on, and it's not struck.
Okay, see what you're referencing. I believe what this was allowing this to do, because this was movement that we had gotten a lot of input from administration and specifically Mr. Caleri, was this was giving the administration more ability to make those calls, whether something was exempt, not exempt, excused. So, I believe that that's why that was being left out, was because it, they would be making those calls anyway.
Okay, and, well, I mean, I guess I would support that also because it, should it not? I would think this policy is written as a district-wide, not a specific to a building.
Right, and that really was the purpose because I think overall, and some questions that we have had raised about policy and attendance and such, is really trying to make more consistency amongst the district. Because there, there's more need on the high school end, specific for reporting needs towards graduation and such. But yet, we want to make sure that we're being very consistent on how we're handling tardy situations in the elementary school to being the similar situation, how we may be handling it at Wickham or the high school. And same thing in regards to reports of absences, whether it be for a medical appointment, or they're gone for half a day or a whole day. And we need to make sure that there's more consistency. That being said, that would be part of procedures, not policy. So, we were trying to make sure that we were sticking very much so to policy. And then, from an administrative standpoint, the building administrators really need to be enforcing the procedures per the law. So, that's really where we were trying to take out some of the things that did not necessarily need to be in there that were specific towards certain schools and making it an overall umbrella.
On page two, dismissals, the last sentence, "Classes missed because of dismissal will be listed as absences unless otherwise referenced above." If you're making this a broad district, that's not applicable. It's only applicable to the high school or middle school, possibly. In referencing classes, again, it's specific.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
You brought that up earlier when we were talking about it.
So, striking that sentence would be no harm to the policy because, again, it becomes
Building-based.
A building-based procedure.
Yeah.
All right.
Which, you're very correct in bringing that up. And I think, you know, just with us looking over it, it was a lot to go through, as you can tell by how much red line it went through, so that's a great point.
So, motion to remove that, if I can, I don't know, but.
Motion made and seconded to remove the last line.
Last line in dismissals.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
And then, to be a little pest again, still, in college visits, just for grammatical, one, two, three, four, fifth line down, at least two school days, having the parenthetical of two, as you have five. And I guess, asking a former administrator in the building, "Is it realistic on a college visit to receive letterhead signed?" Thank you, okay, so again, this is.
It's outdated.
Okay.
Very outdated.
Right, I mean, you would, you might get a brochure, or you might have a parking sticker.
Or you might not get. Or it may just be trusting the student.
Right, so that, I guess, that becomes a procedural thing in the high school, not the, not a.
Policy.
Policy.
Which I will just beg ignorance, because at this point, that's not something I had personally been through. And so, when that was something, we did discuss in policy, but the, you know, administrator did not say something about that, I personally had nothing to go with, other than what information was brought forth. But I think if that's not something that's being done on a regular basis, then I totally appreciate where you're coming from with that. So, verification of attendance at this appointment must be submitted to the assistant principal on the next school day following the absence.
And then, take out everything within the parentheses would seem to make sense,
allowing for whatever the discussion, you know, point is between the administrator and the family that wants to verify that, which is fine. But I just, honestly, that was not something that I would, even had an awareness of.
Just to follow up on that, you have parentheses, I E, college letterhead. The use of I E means that you would only accept a letter on college letterhead attesting to the visitation. I believe what you mean is E G, an example of that would be college letterhead with an official signal.
He's right, from a Latin standpoint, he's right. Well, Latin people need to help.
So, I think the I E needs to be changed to E G because that would just be one example of what we would accept, as opposed to the only example of what we would accept as an excused absence.
But I guess, going back to procedural versus policy, I would suggest that the, from after the second sentence, where it says, "Three excused college visitations per school year," is where it ends. A college visitation request form and the things, that shows up in the high school handbook.
I would agree with that. I would actually strike that, now that you have brought that up. I would just strike it so we can move forward because it is procedural, as opposed to policy.
Of how it gets handled, the having, the amount of it is a policy.
I would agree. So, I think if you want to make a motion to that effect.
Motion to strike from a college visitation request form to the end of paragraph.
Yes.
In college visits.
Motion made and seconded to strike.
College letterhead, signifying a statement of attendance with an official signature.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Last, well, two things. One, excessive absenteeism and truancy. I guess, for clarification, this goes back to the difference between elementary, middle, and high school, where in the first line, it says, "A parent will be notified if their child has five or more unexcused absences in a year or if the child has missed two or more classes due to absence for five days or more." Which, I'm a little confused on that, but I think what you're trying to say.
This is strictly by the law, so this is not, the verbiage that's there is literally what the requirements are by law.
The entire paragraph refers to that 222?
My understanding was yes, that was the case.
Just.
It was very specific in regards to the timeframe.
All right, well, then, I guess I'll lay back on that one. But, and disenrollment, I just, as I said to you earlier when we were talking, I feel like that sentence is a hanging participle. It's just a statement at the end, I don't understand. I know it's Mass General Law, that's, but is that if they don't notify us? If they, are we disenrolling? We can't disenroll, correct?
We cannot disenroll students. We are not allowed to. It's by law. So, unfortunately, we have had situations where there are students that do not show for over this timeframe and we're not able to disenroll them. So, that's just one of the natures of Mass General Law.
So, but if we send notice after five school days from the student's 10th consecutive day, that notice disenrolls them or just?
After that 10th consecutive day. And I would also say, the administrator's probably doing their part on following up because it's not just a, oh, well, we haven't heard from you and you haven't shown. So, there's definitely a process to it, but that's something where, again, we're talking about process and protocols as opposed to policy. So, there's a lot, that it falls on the back of the administration in each building to make sure that they're doing the follow-through. That's also one of the reasons that it's really important to have the attendance officer that we have in place that's really doing a lot of the research that's, you know, out there on all of the students.
Great, thank you.
Entertained motion to approve as amended.
Like to make a motion to approve as amended.
Motion made and seconded to approve attendance policy 8.1 as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you very much.
Coaches policy 6.32.
So, thank you very much. You have before you a copy of the coaches' policy 6.320. And just to make sure that you are aware, the change that needed to occur was on the bottom of page two, relative to length of coaching contracts. So, we needed to make sure that we were in alignment with the contract language. So, that will just say one year, okay?
Should I ask you questions now because I did read it ahead of time?
Certainly, you can put it out there, but we can't really go into
No, but you can.
Discussion on it.
I guess you can come back the next time with them?
Sure, or I can try to pinch it, who knows?
Okay, so, this is more, I guess, an administrative question. Is there truly an athletic coach's manual? That's just the question out there. That was under number 1F. Two A, documented competence as a teacher and/or leader of young people.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Two A qualifications. It's just a, okay.
If you recall, I'm just going to make sure.
You said you only just changed one piece of it, I know.
Right, the memory back that we just approved this, which was a revised coaches' policy back in February of 2016. So, there was a larger overhaul, if you will, of this policy that happened then. And, you know, if you have concerns about that, we can.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I'm fine, thanks.
All right, so, first read, take a look, send me questions.
Thank you very much. Draft 2017, 2018 calendar.
As per school committee policy 7.200, we present to you a proposed FY 18 school calendar, delineating the details as outlined in the policy. So, you have a draft calendar in front of you. The two points that I would draw your attention to, moving a full P D back to the beginning of the year. We currently have been, in the last few years, we have an opening day that is jam-packed with open door day and orientation for new staff and so on. And the prevailing sentiment, I think among, can I speak for teachers and administrators and central office staff, is that we take one of the three P day days, the full P D days, and move it back to the beginning of the year. So, there's another layer of discussion that will come with that. The second open question in this calendar draft is the fact that Veterans Day falls on November 10th. Sorry, it falls on the Saturday this year. And November 10th is the open question, school or not school on November 10th? We looked back, in 2006, we had this very same situation occur, and we, in fact, went to school on November 10th that year. My collaborative is pretty much split down the middle as to what they're doing. This is a Massachusetts law, not a federal holiday. So, the Massachusetts law controls this. And Saturday holidays are celebrated on Saturday, according to Massachusetts law, and Sunday holidays are celebrated on Monday. My recommendation is for school to be in session on November 10th because we would be tacking it on at the end of the school year. You still have to have the requisite amount of school days. And sorry for those who will be seniors next year, but I feel that a day in November is more productive for all than the day in the summer. That's simply my recommendation. And we did find, Mrs. Matthews found one error. Under the school committee meetings, it should not be October 26th, it should be the 24th. But other than that, this has been checked by several set of eyes. And this is what we present to you, the two days, the 28th and the 29th, would be full P D days or full days, November 7th and January 16th. So, front-loading those full days in the beginning of the year, and then two half-days, October 19th and March 8th.
Can we, can we kind of think about this and vote on this the next meeting?
I'm following the fact that it needed to be presented in March, so we are ahead of the curve on this.
Okay.
Yep, and M.E.A. has already looked at it.
All right, good. Matthews?
I was going to make a motion, but no, I'm going to motion to table it.
The Senate see.
Thank you. I, I do think that it's important, though, for a little piece of information that it came about that we stumbled upon, that if in fact we move forward on the calendar as proposed, we also then need to take a look at making a change on our school calendar policy. So, I'm going to hand out the school calendar policies so you all can take a copy of this just because if we're going to put this on the table for ponderance, you need to keep this in thought. It's not a major ordeal, but it would need to be changed. Point two, on the current school calendar policy 7.200, the school year for students shall begin the Tuesday before Labor Day. If, if we moved forward on this pol, or this calendar as proposed, the students would not be attending on that first Tuesday. Now, that being the case, as Ms. Gruelik and I had some conversations, we've had this issue years in the past, leave it at that. So, this would just be cleaning up something that probably needed to have been fixed or cleaned up before. If in fact we are going to need to go back and change this, though, there are a number of other issues in this policy that need to be looked at as well. I will, you know, bring it to your attention now in case anyone has issues or concerns. Some things that I had some concerns with, I think Ms. Gruelik also did, was having some of the tight information about the third Monday in February or the third Monday in April as opposed to President's Day or Patriots' Day. If you get down to number seven, where it's talking about specific days, you know, second Monday in October as opposed to Veterans' Day or Christmas. So, I think language around those days or dates probably really needs to be clarified a bit.
Is there a reason we can't just approve a new policy that says the school calendar will be based on the approval of the school committee in the prior March or something?
We can certainly do that. That's why we wanted to bring this forward to everyone because it, there were, there were issues.
There is contractual language in the M.E.A. contract, however, regarding some of this, but they do look at it ahead of time as well to approve.
Exactly.
So, yeah, that's a simple way to do it.
And the other, and the other potential issue was on the second page around...
Delete the whole thing.
The semesters where it's trimesters, quarters, et cetera. Because if you recall, with the scheduling changes that were made specifically at Whitcomb, they did move to more of a trimester from a scheduling standpoint. So, just, there are a number of things you should be looking at, okay? So, I just wanted to make you aware of it because this policy has a bunch of issues if we're going to be moving forward on changing the calendar.
I just changed that piece. I just changed the piece on graduation.
So, if we're going to change this policy, do we have to table?
Well, he had already asked for it to be tabled, the calendar anyway, so...
I just, I threw it out there. I didn't, I didn't, I figured there would be some questions on it.
Okay. We can't, we can table it. We do, I mean, right now, per what we do have in policy and per the contract with the M.E.A., is making sure that there is an awareness of the calendar, and it's presented to them prior to March, which obviously Ms. Gruelik has already presented it to the M.E.A. The sooner that we can move forward on the calendar, obviously, is always beneficial. Can we move forward in getting this onto our plate quickly for policy? Certainly. Are we going to get it done, though, before the February 28th meeting? No. I'm just being realistic that next week is holiday. I, so, so the thing is, is, you know, folks, your call on how you want to handle it, we need to do something to change this policy, no matter what. We can obviously, at some point, whether we do it tonight or we do it on the 28th, move forward on however we want to move with the calendar, with the acknowledgement that that amendment must be made, must be made in the policy. So, I don't care. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Is it the pleasure of the committee to table this until the next regularly scheduled meeting?
I'm okay voting on it.
I'm okay voting on it tonight, too.
I don't care. That's fine.
Motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Motion made in seconded to approve as presented.
With your amended changes, excuse me?
Well, right, I'm sorry, with the amended change, the date change, sorry.
The date, the, the school committee date, 24.
Yep.
Motion made in seconded to approve as amended. Any further discussion?
So, we're going to approve the calendar in violation of our own policy?
Yep.
We have.
It's guilty with an explanation.
Oh, no, I understand that, but this is, this is the problem when we try to cover every scenario with these policies. It's just, it's too detailed.
It is, it is.
It's crazy.
It was.
But out of concern for this, well, has the M.E.A. given their blessing then to this calendar?
Yes.
Well, I mean, we're hoisted on a row in portard, but I don't like, I don't like to violate our policies.
I don't disagree that...
I'll be voting against the approval, but I'm just one of seven.
So, and, and to that, we will, we will move forward on getting this amendment done, but it didn't come about until we literally looked at it in comparison to the calendar and realized with that change, where if you recall, the P.D. days were moved last year or two years ago? Sorry, two years ago. And so, with that change, this was not an issue because, because we were having the students coming in. So, you know, I, we, we became aware of it and wanted to bring it to your attention, and we'd be more than happy to move forward on making that change.
I would ask Michelle if there's any reason we can't just delete this, this policy and have one line that the school committee will approve of a calendar on an annual basis. Leave it at that, because you're always going to have conflicts, so...
I'd like to make sure that we're going back and we're double-checking against whatever.
Excuse me, I'd like to make sure that we're going back and double-checking in regards to any kind of contract language, just because if I...
It is referenced in here, though.
And that's what I'm just meaning, is I want to make sure that we're aligned because when Ms. Gruelik and I were talking about it, there are some different nuances in each of the contracts because there isn't consistency across the board. And I'd like to make sure before we just abolish the whole thing that we make sure that we're putting in the appropriate language, but not too much, and I'm in complete agreement with you. But I, I just don't want to strike it until we have all of our ducks in a row.
On the motion to approve as amended, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? New scholarships.
The background on these scholarships has been provided to you by Principal Kaleri. You have them provided in, in front of you. If you have any questions, we certainly can answer them for you, but we recommend that you accept these listed so the graduates will be able to receive these at the June 2017 graduation.
Just so we can read them, the Tater and Howard Scholarship, celebrating its 25th anniversary in 2017, will be giving out $1,000. The Frederick A. Belloc Memorial Music and Math Scholarship will be issuing a scholarship for $500. The Shirley Margolis Memorial Scholarship. There will be an annual scholarship for $500 over the next eight years. And the David Savageo Memorial Scholarship, Palagic, Inc., memorializing a, in memory of David Savageo from Palagic. And that will be $2,500, so... With those.
Move to approve with gratitude.
Motion made in seconded to approve with gratitude. All those in favor?
Wait, I have a question. Just to, it just seemed vague, so just on the number three, Shirley Margol, Margolis Memorial selection will be done with the Marlboro High School Committee and himself. I just, I didn't know what that meant.
Himself, I would say that's Mr. Hank Margolis.
I know, but I don't know what the high school...
Committee is.
There's a scholarship committee.
There's a scholarship committee.
Oh, okay, thank you.
On the motion to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Grants Exxon, grants an award, Exxon Mobil Corporation to support the math and/or science area, MHS, $500.
Move to approve.
Motion made in seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Reports of committees. The Senate see.
Thank you. So, a couple of things for policy. Obviously, you can tell that we have a number of things going on. We are trying to set up another meeting in short order, and we'll alert you all of the date. The other thing that I wanted to, I guess, broach is I had asked for an action item to be on here that during our policy, our last policy subcommittee meeting, we had a long conversation around the guidelines for VOTAC educational program selection. Reason being that there were new, I guess, rules about non-resident students tuition process pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 74, that kind of came out. And Mr. Bergeron had made us aware of a specific section where it appeared as if we needed to be looking for a designation of the VOTAC school that would be supporting the Marlboro community. And while that seems maybe fairly obvious, it was looking for a vote of what that VOTAC school is from a designation standpoint. So, it was understanding dollars on sending students and the money that may need to follow said child. So, that's why I was asking for it to be on the agenda. I'm not quite sure how that was...
I actually asked that we remove it from this agenda and put it on the next one. I wanted to talk to the superintendent and business manager about maybe offering some vocational programs in our own public schools. Maybe something that can pick up some of the areas that aren't being done right now. But I didn't want to jump into designating a local school and, and, you know, for us to get into it because it's not an annual vote. It's a recision of a vote. If we decide to change or, or move in a different direction, and I'm not saying that we need to be the next vocational school, but maybe there are some areas that we could offer some vocational programs in. So, I just wanted to have some discussions with her before we actually voted on it, that's all.
I, I think, at least the concerns that we had had raised, I guess, was that there, and forgive me if I'm not going to recall it appropriately, but I believe it was like March 15th that we needed to make sure that previous to March 15th that we kind of had a designation, not that there had to be something official. And I think that's where, yes, we could obviously create some policy around it, but we, at minimum, and I think when you had reached out to some of the M.A.S.S., it had seemed that some districts were moving forward more on verbal, you know, vote. So, it would be marked within the minutes as opposed to necessarily a specific policy. We weren't finding a policy out there, so that's really why we were bringing it forward. So, I hear what you're, you know, saying. I think it was just trying to make sure that we were all on the same page, that at minimum, without having some of those classes here, that we were at least acknowledging that that was the vocational district we were sending to.
Any other reports of committees?
So, it's tabled, right?
Well, we didn't, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, right.
But we have until the middle of March, don't you think?
Yeah, okay.
Numbers for, any members? The Senate see.
Sorry, thank you very much. Quickly, I just wanted to bring forth something to you all and/or the community for an awareness. There was a bill that was moved to the House floor. It was H.R. 610. And it was just moved today on the 23rd of February, or, excuse me, not 23rd of February, January 23rd. It was moved recently. It was written up, and there were a number of, I can't, representatives, sorry, I'm tired, representatives that had moved this forward. And the reason I'd like to bring it to your attention is it was to distribute federal funds for elementary and secondary education in the form of vouchers for eligible students and to repeal a certain rule relating to nutrition standards in schools. So, this was something, I think, pretty important. And I'm not going to be saying my own perspective here, but I would just like to make sure that you are paying attention and take note of it so that you have an awareness if you have some thoughts, so, thank you.
Remind me of the House bill?
The House bill is H.R. 610.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members? Any other members wanting to be heard? Seeing none?
Band is the 16th.
Okay.
So, on that.
Because the calendar changed.
Yeah, all-city chorus is tomorrow night, and all-city band is on Thursday night.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made in seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Thank you very much.